Spend half the day tomorrow pulling pallets out to de-rack it and get it out of the pallet.
Commissioner Schull, we're ready.
I call the order, the May 11, 2023, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Schmidt, please do the roll call.
Yes, you, yes, thank you, Vice Chair Schull. First, Chair Smith is not feeling well and is out of the office today, so Vice Chair Schull will chair the meeting. Staff support today, Tony Marinick, clerk to the board, Sean Lilligrin, Assistant County Counsel. Commissioner West is on his way, but he's delayed. Online, though, is Commissioner Schrader, so you do have a quorum. With that, roll call online. Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
In the room, Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Vice Chair Schull.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Administrator Schmidt, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Vice Chair Schull, thank you. First is a board discussion item, and this is a draft tolling letter to the Oregon Legislature. You discussed this draft on Tuesday earlier this week. You directed staff to work on edits you had recommended. The updated version is before you tonight. It is posted online, and we emailed it to you as well, commissioners. And Commissioner Savis and Chair Smith did work offline and gave some edits in addition to other commissioners. So tonight, commissioners, we're seeking your approval of this letter, or if there are any other edits you'd like to make, but seeking to have a final version tonight that we can send off tomorrow.
Okay. Do the commissioners have any clarifying questions or comments about this letter?
Just want to clarify that I believe it was consensus that we would all sign it or have our signatures on it.
Yes, all five commissioners, yes.
So I don't have any questions, and unless Commissioner Schrader has one, I'm ready to make a motion.
I have no questions. I think it's a good letter. Let's move ahead.
Okay. Please go ahead, Commissioner Savis.
All right, move for approval of the, of the letter regarding tolling to, directed to the governor, Senate President, and the House Speaker.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Are there any further comments or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schull.
Aye. The motion has passed 4-0. Gary, what is next?
Thank you, Vice Chair. So we will still have all, all five commissioners sign because Chair Smith approved the draft, as did Commissioner West, and since you didn't edit it, I think that's, I hope you would agree that everyone could still sign the letter. We'll take care of that. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Elected Officials, Item One, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item Two, Approval to Apply for Fiscal Year 2325 Justice Reinvestment Program Funding from the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. Anticipated Funding Value Not to Exceed $2,553,400 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. This is for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Juvenile, Item One, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for Juvenile Detention Services at the Donald E. Long Detention Facility. Agreement Value is $4,794,718 over three years. Funding is through the Oregon Youth Authority and $2,732,989 in budgeted county general funds. Health Housing Human Services, Item One, Approval of an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Behavioral Health Workforce Incentive Funds. Agreement Value is $381,250 for 14 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Two, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Youth Era for Peer-Delivered Services for Young Adults. Contract Value is $169,206 for 22 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health, Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Three, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Youth Era for Peer-Delivered Services at the Drop-In Center for Youth and Young Adults. Contract Value is $511,378 for 22 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Four, Approval of Amendment Two, Increasing Funding of an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Old American, Older Americans Act and Oregon Project Independence Programs. Amendment Value is $2,152,340. Agreement Value has increased to $9,428,410 for two years. Funding is through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item Five, Approval of an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Senior Health Insurance Benefits Assistance Medicare Improvements for Patients and Providers Act Program. Agreement Value is $8,401 for one year. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, Item One, Approval of a Resolution Declaring the Public Necessity and Purpose for Acquisition of Right-of-Way, Easements, and Fee Property and Authorizing Good Faith Negotiations and Condemnation Actions for the Bilquist Elementary School Sidewalks Project. Total Project Value is $3,316,448. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation, Safe Routes to Schools Infrastructure Grant, System Development Charges, and County Road Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item Two, Approval to Allow Repurchase of 00954-916/34E35B00400 by Mr. Jeffrey Goodrich for $81,460.17. Funding is through the purchaser. No county general funds are involved. Item Three, Approval to Allow Purchase of 01042674/43E0200600 by Beaver Creek Properties LLC for $2,000 pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute 275.225. Funding is through the purchaser. No county general funds are involved. Item Four, Approval of a Goods and Services Contract with Rapid Response by Oakley Incorporated for Providing RV Storage and Decommissioning Services. Total Value is $205,000 for three years. Funding is through state grant and local contributions. No county general funds are involved. Item Five, Approval of a Public Improvement Contract, Northstar Electrical Contractors Incorporated for the Canby Ferry Intelligent Transportation Systems Project. Total Value is $448,710. Funding through Ferry Boat Discretionary Funds and County Road Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Vice Chair Schull, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Clerk of the Board. Does any commissioner have an item they want to remove?
Chair, I just wanted to make a comment on the, on Item D1, which is the approval of a public necessity for acquisition for the sidewalk project around Bilquist Elementary School. Know this area very well, and it's almost emblematic of the community at large, the unincorporated area around here where there are not a lot of sidewalks, and schoolchildren are put in a very dangerous situation when a good majority of that area doesn't have any. So this is a big, huge safety project. I applaud everyone for their work on this and looking forward to see this get underway, hopefully faster than the Jennings Lodge sidewalk project. Hopefully much faster than that one.
Yeah, well, thank you for that comment. Can I have a motion?
I, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Are there any further discussion, comments? Clerk, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schull?
Aye. The motion is approved 3-0. Administrator Schmidt, what is next?
Next is public communication.
Next up is, okay, public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I'll take in-person testimony first. First card I have here is Mr. Grover Bornfeld.
Good evening. I'm Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld, and I live in Jennings Lodge, and it's nice to see you all. And hi, Martha, who I can't see, but.
Yeah, Grover.
Hey. So I'm here to really thank you all. I mean, we are at the edge of something that several of us have been working on for 15 years, and I, we wouldn't be sitting here if you all hadn't done what you all have done so far. So we are, we'll be back next Wednesday. We, it's a policy session, so we can't talk, so some of us want to be here. We have a good showing of folks, and others are, the doors downstairs are locked, so there are people on their way up now. But in either case, we just really want to let you know, and I remember the last time I talked to you was to talk about how great it was during the swearing-in ceremony, that kind of working together, and then we went to the ARPA money and that working together, and then the filling the gap. And so this is, we're expecting that the pricing will come in. We don't know what it'll be yet, but we think it should be reasonable. And then we're on our way to actually break ground so that by the fall, they're well underway, and we will all be seeing, and I can't wait to have you all be at the ribbon cutting, et cetera. But you know, I was looking through my stuff as I getting ready to come here, and this is a projection from when we were on the Concord Task Force and Library. And it said we were going to be done by December of 2020. So I just want you to know, life's kind of thrown a monkey wrench into that, and I'm just so thrilled that we are where we are now. And we'll be back on Wednesday, and we'll be here to watch and appreciate, and that's about all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bornfeld.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited to see that construction begin, and I'd like to personally thank you and everybody in your neighborhood who's working on this for your endurance and your enthusiasm, and we look forward to the day that we can sit down in those new libraries and have a cup of coffee with you, and a donut, please.
And the only thing I didn't say was, in fact, this is a group, it isn't just our neighborhood. This is, both library populations have been working together on this for a good while, and that's, that for me is just, it's, it's, everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, yes, thank you, sir. Next, I'd like to call up Nancy Eichstad. Is that correct pronunciation, ma'am? You can help me out when you come up, sit down. Thank you.
It's okay, it's Eichstad.
Okay, thank you. Please state your address, please.
State.
Your address.
665 Barbary Place, Gladstone.
Oh, good, welcome.
Thank you. Greetings, commissioners. I'm Nancy Eichstad. I'm a Gladstone resident and an alternate on the county library board. I'm here to encourage your support for building the Gladstone and Oak Lodge libraries sooner rather than later. Some of us have been working on these two projects. I've got 16 years, Grover's got 15. We'll have to talk. We would like to see them completed. I brought with me today a squash plant. It's squash night at the Gladstone Library. Local garden expert Kay Everts is holding a class this evening using squash to explore the power of resilient gardening and seed saving. Our two libraries hold dozens of these kinds of classes each month, both in Gladstone and Oak Lodge, in spite of the poor condition that these buildings are in. For those of you who have not been in the Gladstone Library, I'll give you a quick tour. It was built in 1962. It's arranged on five separate floors with no elevator for handicapped access. Its spaces are small and divided up in ways that make it difficult to hold even small events like toddler storytime. The library's staff are making the best of what they have, but working conditions are difficult. The HVAC is sporadic, with some areas heating up to 80 degrees while other areas are freezing at the same time. The library's networking equipment is a rat's nest. I looked at it today, and I got really scared. There's a very long history of asbestos, lead paint, mold, electrical problems that you'd expect in a 62-year-old public building. The library is uncomfortable and unsafe. The Gladstone Library serves greater Gladstone but is also proximate to John Wetton Elementary, just two blocks away. The elementary school has 600 children, grades one through five, and the library bravely holds a summer reading program for these kids each year, but it can't hold it in the library because it's so small. Three years ago, I joined some neighbors and volunteers to put a fresh coat of paint on the exterior, even though we knew the building was slated for demolition. As I touched up the trim around the west side windows, I noticed that the frames were so rotten that you could put your hand through and check out a book without needing to go inside the building. How much longer do we think that paint will hold up? Our libraries truly are a valued resource in our community. They're community centers, employment resources, places for learning and exploring. Your support continues to be necessary to move these two projects along in a reasonable timeframe, and I, I wish I had a metaphor for squash, but I don't, so it's my problem. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner West, did you?
Nancy, hold on. If I remember correctly, while we were serving a meal in Tukwila.
Yes.
Together, we talked about the libraries. I want to let you know that since then, Commissioner Savis took me on a nice tour of that area for a long afternoon, and you are right, you might be able to check out a book without ever having to go into the library. I noticed that immediately the buildings are in disarray. One of them smells as a very distinct odor when you walk into it, the Oak Lodge Library. And so this is an exciting thing to help bring this to the community, so thank you for your constant advocacy, and I wanted to make sure you knew that I got around to touring those libraries.
Great. There are businesses in that vicinity that need to have the music.
Just go, yeah, you're fine.
That need to have the area looking nice, and the library just wasn't, so we had to paint it, even though it was kind of useless.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Savis, you have a question?
I just want to say, when I took Commissioner West for the tour of the libraries last Thursday, the first thing he noticed when we got out of the car, walking to the door of the Gladstone Library, was the dry rotted in the, in the trim outside, and nice blue paint, by the way, which is probably holding it all together.
Lovely color.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next, Anata Blackmar, will you come up and have a seat?
Good evening, commissioners and Administrator Schmidt. I'm Anata Blackmar, and I live in Oak Grove. The reason I'm a little sunburned is I got a chance to go for a few days to the coast, and we passed through some very small towns on the way to the coast. And I was impressed to see a sign announcing where the library was located in one of the smallest towns we passed through. It reminded me how important investing in a library is for a community, whether it's a tiny town or a major urban residential area. On the county website, there's a glowing description of the county's approval of funds to cover the funding gap for the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Libraries. It's a great read. The library supporters here tonight, and the hundreds who frequent the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Libraries, are looking forward to this library funding being finalized next week, now that the cost estimates are in. Thank you for supplementing the ARPA funds with county funds. Believe me, we appreciate it, and love that groundbreaking is just around the corner. Finally.
Thank you, Anata. Appreciate that. Are there any more in-person testimonies tonight? Okay. Clerk to the Board, will you please moderate the public communication on Zoom?
I will begin with Deborah Bukowski. Deborah, you have three minutes. Please state your name and area of residence.
Hi, my name is Deborah Bukowski. I live just off of Jennings Road, and I just, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say thank you for all the efforts that you put into get our lib, our two libraries to the point where we're about to finalize funding. I hope that next Wednesday I will be with you, and we will get this all finalized so we can finally move on. Having been one of the people who have been doing this for either 15 or 16 years, depending upon your estimate, we're very much looking forward to the end of all of this and the construction of these two libraries, which will make a really substantial difference in both communities. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Deborah.
I agree with you.
If there is anyone else who would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Vice Chair Schull, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we'll move on. Administrator Schmidt, what is next?
Next is county administrator update. That's me. I like to share good news of our employees and our services here at the county during my time. The Coordinated Housing Access Team within, within Health Housing Human Services recently supported Love One and the Father's Heart Street Ministry in an event that gave residents who are homeless a chance to complete an assessment with our coordinating housing access team here at the county. These assessments are a vital step, as people are then matched with relevant housing programs. Demand for this, a demand for this event was so great that Love One and the Father's Heart Street Ministry actually needed help, so our staff from Health Housing Human Services, with moments' notice, went over to assist at this event. And our team showed up to help, again, with very little notice. Love One wrote after the event, "The collaboration with Clackamas County was absolutely amazing. The collective stress level went down immediately, and 22 assessments were accomplished in one day, a new record for us at Love One and the Father's Heart. Thank you for partnering with us." So I want to thank the members of our county coordinating housing access team who helped at this event, and they are the supervisor, Lauren Adamski, Isaac Amaral, Lily Johnson, Eric Barayesa, and Donna Davis. They were the leads of that event, so thank you very much for the work that they did for this particular event and the work they do every day to support our community. Next, our county clerk received a note from a resident in Oregon City complimenting the work of our staff in our records management office. The person wrote, "I want to compliment Bippin Lockenpaul in the county's passports office." He tried to answer questions regarding my and my husband's passports by phone involving a Transportation Security Administration question. He said, "Just bring the passport by for him to review. It took him less than five minutes to resolve the issue. He was professional, understood my situation, and very kind. Please thank him again." So thank you to Bippin and our great staff at the records management in the clerk's office for their great service. That is my update, just one, a few of many good news of our work of our employees here at Clackamas County. Back to you, Vice Chair Schull, and next is commissioner communication.
Yeah, well, thank you, Administrator Schmidt, and thanks to all of our county staff for their great work. It's much appreciated. Now it's time for commissioner communication. Commissioner Schrader, are you out there? Can she hear us?
Commissioner Schrader, you are muted. You're still, you're still muted, Commissioner Schrader.
I, I just unmuted, sorry about that. The glitches of technology. Well, I spent my morning really working with our Clackamas Workforce Board and other members of the community. We are looking at childcare as an economic driver in our county. We found out with most of our research that we had childcare deserts, where people aren't really in, families aren't having enough access to actually have enough childcare so they could get back into the employment, working market. And I'm looking at this from a business perspective about how do you bring prosperity and opportunity to the employers as well as the employees? And what role does having adequate childcare work? What kind of return on investment having access to childcare will help companies with? And I think I've already mentioned to you, I've visited Siemens, I've visited Daimler. We are going to be pulling together a conversation with the business community to really study what a return on investment may be with some kind of a process where we can improve access across the county. I, for one, look at this as an economic development driver. I am not interested in putting out any kind of a new tax. I don't think that's the way to do it. I think this is going to be a coalition of employers and employees getting together so they can improve their opportunities for childcare and for continued prosperity. So it's an interesting, interesting topic. I do think that we're going to be moving ahead with conversations with our largest, larger businesses in the community, as well as people who are actually involved in the childcare industry. I will tell you that Clackamas Community College at this time is initiating a training program for early childhood development, so we can start a supply chain to help childcare people be trained and know what it takes to work with younger children, because it's the most, Commissioner West will agree with me, it's those early years where brain development happens extremely quickly. So stay tuned for that. It's, it's a project that I hold dear to my heart because I spent a week with my daughter, as many of you know, in Boston, and ended up really helping get children back and forth for childcare. It is an issue, and I think employers will see greater retention of employees, and I think that we're going to be hopefully taking a closer look at this in the near future. So that's been kind of one of the things I've been doing. I also want to wish everybody out there to be good to your mother.
Yeah.
This is Mother's Day weekend, and I am spending Mother's Day with a dear friend of mine, and as a result of that, I had my boys take me out to dinner last week for my Mother's Day, my Mother's Day dinner. But be kind to your mothers. Remember, none of us would be here without our mothers and without the grace and compassion and care they gave us to help us be the human beings we are today. So happy Mother's Day to everyone. Thank you, Commissioner Schull, and Commissioner West, and Commissioner Savis.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader, and yes, childcare, super critical issue with our families, and of course, mothers.
Right.
Remember your mom, she said. Commissioner Savas, what's new?
Oh, I've had an interesting day. Most of my meetings today somehow navigated to, to libraries. And here we are tonight, talking about libraries. So I think it's probably apropos to continue the conversation a little bit. So I met with a former city councillor, not Gladstone. And the question came up about, geez, you know, why are you building libraries for Oak Grove and, you know, and Gladstone? So I had to tell the story, which, you know, reflecting back on, on the situation. And I appreciate the first speaker, Grover, making the comment about our swearing-in and my statement then, and my heartfelt passion for, at least in this job, was trying to repair and remedy a lot of promises, commitments, commitments especially. Some of them voter-approved, by the way. Voter, and this is one of them, libraries were voter-approved. But the history of this goes back into the 90s, actually goes back even farther, but the relevant history goes back into the 90s. And I think the county has benefited actually quite a bit from, you know, measures that took place that got rolled into the permanent fund of the county, the permanent tax rate. And so we benefited. So after that roll-in, another measure comes on, another library measure comes on in 2008, which formed the library district and funding for all. So all the cities with their unique scenarios, situations, you know, built their libraries or improved their libraries or expanded their libraries to meet, meet the goals of the, of this, of the measure, as well as, you know, library standards. But I remember at C4, back when I was on the Water District, I remember C4 members arguing with the county commissioners, that the city members argue with the county commissioners about libraries and saying, oh, you know, the uncorporate areas are using our libraries and not paying their fair share, and so on, so forth. So that was 2003 and '04. And then 2008, this measure comes on. So now we can say that to, to those cities, and I shared with this councillor, a former councillor, I said, you know, that's no longer the case. You know, all the taxpayers are paying their fair share for libraries. And, you know, if you look at the per capita investment and what they get for that investment, you know, there's a size, a square footage of library for that population by formula. And Gladstone is, has a very tired library, 5,000 square feet, I believe, today. And the Oak Lodge Library, which is woefully undersized for the per capita basis, it makes those two, those are the last two holdouts of the district, the last two commitments of the county. I wish we would have got this done years ago, and it would have been cheaper and not this accelerated rate. But I am going to be just tickled to actually see this through, see the groundbreaking, and see these two libraries being built, and to be able to honor a commitment made to the voters, to the citizens. And I think that's, that is, that's the biggest deal, you know, for me, and that message today that I had shared with that councillor. I do have a question. So what is a area with a library that's not a city? It can't be a bus stop. Their shirt says, that shirt Nancy's wearing says, "A city without a library is just a bus stop." So just, it's, it's a rhetorical question, but. Thank you for the time, and look forward to next week and having the library discussion next week.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Savas has got a great deal of history in this county, and I know he's very, very dedicated to seeing these libraries built. Commissioner West, what's new in your day?
Well, a pretty long dental appointment was where I was coming from, so. And the painkillers are just wearing off. So bear with me, I, I'll be brief. Spent a good portion of this week, like many of our weeks, focusing on the homelessness addiction and mental health issues that face our communities. And had some really good and promising conversations about some things in the future that I think the communities will be very excited about. Some of that started early on, earlier in the week when I got a chance to do the ride-along with Commissioner Savas and, and, and not just tour Jennings Lodge, Oak Grove, Gladstone, and a little bit of Milwaukee, but almost got to do a little vision casting with a great colleague. And I appreciate that opportunity, and I appreciate learning from you. So that was a great opportunity that I had. A lot of this week for me was, was being the new guy and still learning a little bit. I also got to spend a significant amount of time with Dan Johnson, the director of our transportation department, catching me up on the Bull Run Bridge issue that we talked about quite a bit this week. Concerned about that, finding solutions and funding to fix that bridge is essential. And so I spent a significant amount of time doing that. And then also a little bit of an extra introduction with the finance department. And I appreciate Elizabeth's time to, to get me caught up to speed with what they do. She has over 100 employees that she manages in two different, am I right? Two different departments, finance and.
Facilities.
Facilities, too, yeah. So I really appreciate her stewardship with tax dollars and her ability to help us be more lean and efficient with every single dollar. I think our finance department's doing a great job, and it was so timely as we go into budget week, which is going to be a big, a big endeavor for all of us in the community. And I think that's all I have for today, and I'll pass the baton off to you, Commissioner Scholl.
Thank you, Commissioner West. I would like to thank Jennifer Worth, the operations director at the Great Circle Recovery Center on 82nd Avenue. It's operated by the Grand Ron Council. And there they do methadone treatment for those people who are suffering from opioid addiction. I was very impressed with their facility. And I'm very appreciative of the tribe for their commitment to helping people who are in need. I'd like to make a comment on K-12 schools. This year is almost done, but September will be another school year. And I'd like to pass on that Florida has become the fourth state this year to pass a universal school choice program. And I encourage people in Oregon and in this county to look at the potential for doing the same thing. Our K-12 system needs some reform. Although the commission is not involved in K-12 decision-making, it is a big concern of ours. On the budget, next Monday, we receive our budget folders. Then on the 22nd of May, budget hearings begin. I encourage you to tune in on Zoom and listen to the proceedings. I think you can even come in here and listen in person. These budgets are very important to the future of our county. And your comments, you won't be able to comment during the hearings, but certainly I look forward to any comments you might have to make regarding those budgets for our different departments. That really is all I have to say. I do want to pass on one comment regarding safety. This weekend is going to be very warm, and our young people are going to be wanting to go down to the rivers. But the rivers are very high, they're flowing very quickly, and the water's very cold. So moms and dads, keep an eye on those kids this weekend. Let's be safe. With that, Administrator Schmidt, do you have any other business for this meeting?